County Commission meeting. I'm going to ask Reverend Ken Austin to lead the limitation and Commissioner Walker to lead us in the pledge.
Father, we come today humble, bow heads and humble hearts. Thank you for this opportunity you've given us to live in the greatest place in the United States of America. In this great state, this great city, and this working county, we bless you for it. We thank you for these commissioners who take this work at heart, who go beyond their means to bless the least among us. We pray strength and wisdom over them. We thank you for this opportunity of service here in this great city and county. We pray that you continue to open heaven's window, shower down upon us, give us the wherewithal, the what it takes, to continue to bless the least among us. We ask you to bless this time today, govern over us, we ask. And we pray all of this in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Father.
The United States of America. And to the Republic where which is stand one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will call roll now Commissioner Harris.
Here.
Chairman Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Walker.
Present.
Commissioner Sankey.
Here.
Vice Chairman Singleton.
Here.
We have a quorum.
We have one presenter, and that's William Gere.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I am extremely happy for the privilege of being here today. Today, in no uncertain terms, was what I would call a think big day at the county commission. That's what I would call it. I am floating because of all the big projects that I heard about. And I'm not saying thank you, or about to say thank you, because it's the Thanksgiving season. I'm just saying thank you because I'm so happy for what you all are doing. I'm just happy about what you all are doing and for how you all are reaching out and helping the people in the community that are doing the things that are impacting the lives of the community. I just want to say thank you. Now, I plan to get with, what's your name again? Florence, that's right. Plan to get with Florence to see can I get into that other meeting that I'm not limited to three minutes because based on what I heard this morning, I need to learn from the people who presented today. And I thought I was a fast learner, and so...
They come once a year.
Say that again.
They come once a year.
I...
They come once a year.
Oh, they come once a year.
Not once a meeting.
I...
Go ahead. It's okay.
Actually, I need to stop while I'm ahead. Thank you for what you do. And thank you for the humor, Mr. Chairman, because that really is funny. God bless you. I love you guys. And I'll tell the story of these two young men.
Forty seconds.
The next time. God bless you.
Florence is going to set you up for the next meeting.
Thank you, Florence.
Yes, sir. We'll consider the minutes of the regular meeting of October 19th, 2021.
Move for approval.
Second.
Consider accounts payable checks and payroll checks.
Move for approval.
Second.
In objection. So ordered.
Consider agreements for housing juveniles at the Montgomery County Youth Facility for Otaga, Butler, Chilton, and Elmore Counties.
So moved.
I'm moved.
Oh, sorry. Second.
In objection. So ordered.
Consider an agreement with the Alabama Department of Public Health for replacement of the Health Department facility roof.
Move for approval.
Second.
In objection. So ordered.
Consider an agreement with the Alabama Department of Public Health for improvements at the Health Department facility.
Move for approval.
Second. In objection. So ordered.
Consider proposed 2022 legislative agenda item relating to Montgomery County to authorize the sheriff to conduct fundraising events, to provide for the use of the proceeds, and to provide that this act is remedial and curative.
Move for approval.
Second. In objection. So ordered.
Two second.
Consider recognizing and denying a claim regarding sequestrus by Dell.
Move for approval.
Second.
In objection. So ordered.
Consider an increase in the daily compensation to $80 per day for the Board of Registars effective November 14th, 2021.
Move for approval.
Second.
In objection. So ordered.
Consider a bond issued to fund repairs and renovations to the detention facility and other capital projects.
Move for approval.
Second.
All the people that have been knowing by raising your right hand? All opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to go and say that I'm not opposed to the renovations or, you know, the sheriff and what he does. I just think we need a dollar amount on this particular agenda item, which we don't have. Yes, sir. Against it.
Three, two, motion paid.
Consider miscellaneous appropriations to agencies with the following additions. Commissioners Dean, Walker, and Singleton each appropriated $5,000 to Mercy House. Commissioners Dean and Walker each appropriated $2,500 to the Botanical Gardens and to St. Paul AME for the Rosa Parks Celebration, $1,000 from Commissioner Sankey, and $6,500 combined equally, shared equally between Chairman Dean and Commissioner Harris.
Did you get me for the $2,500 for the Botanical Garden? From designated?
Yes, it's from designated.
I'm sorry, you're not on that yet. Thank you.
That was in addition to what was already on there, right? I had two items already on there.
Yeah, those are just in addition.
Right.
All right, I'm over.
Second.
In objection. So ordered.
Consider miscellaneous appropriations to education.
Move for approval.
Second.
In objection. So ordered.
Consider miscellaneous appropriations from designated revenue with an addition of $1,000 from Commissioner Singleton to Parks and Recreation for the McIntyre Senior Dinner. $5,000 from Commissioner Harris for Botanical Gardens and $2,500 from Commissioner Sankey for Botanical Gardens. To Mercy House, $30,000 from the joint infrastructure designated revenue. $5,000 from Commissioner Harris. And that's all.
I didn't get my $2,000 for McIntyre.
It was already on there. I'm sorry. Okay. Correct, there's $2,000 from agencies for Parks and Recreation for the McIntyre Community Center for Senior Citizens Programs.
Move for approval.
Second.
In objection. So ordered.
Consider budget change request number one for the county commission appropriations.
Move for approval.
Second. In objection. So ordered.
Two second.
I did.
I agree. I voted. I'm recorded on here. I abstained. I abstained from this vote.
Yes, Commissioner Harris.
What do we vote on?
The budget change request, you...
Item 13.
You made the motion.
I thought I made the motion and voted for it.
There you go.
Consider a job description for our county attorney.
Move for approval.
Second.
In objection. So ordered.
Consider position fill request for the Engineering Department for an administrative support specialist and a county road equipment operator one and two.
Move for approval.
Second.
In objection. So ordered.
Consider a position fill request for the detention facility for corrections officer corporal.
So moved. Second.
In objection. So ordered.
Consider position fill request for the Sheriff's Office for an administrative support associate, two deputy sheriff trainees, and a deputy sheriff sergeant.
Move for approval.
Second.
In objection. So ordered.
Consider a position fill request for support services for a custodial maintenance foreman.
Move for approval.
Second. In objection.
Stuck on the last one?
Yes.
Who said?
I did. I don't know, my screen is not there anymore.
Hit the continue to vote button at the bottom.
Consider position fill request for the youth facility court for a juvenile probation officer.
Move for approval.
Second.
In objection. So ordered.
Let me clarify with Tammy.
I don't believe you approved number eight, uh, number seventeen. Number eighteen, number eighteen.
We did.
Yeah, we got four fours and...
We discussed it.
It's Ms. Isaiah's vote.
What is that?
That one's full. It's got all five.
I believe consider a position fill request for the youth facility detention for a juvenile detention officer.
Did what is that pass? Okay.
No, that was for the court. Consider position fill request for the youth facility detention for a juvenile detention officer and a juvenile detention supervisor.
Move for approval.
Second. In objection. So ordered.
That's all our items.
No trouble?
What?
No trouble?
No, sir.
What is this wave rule that you put up there on the mast?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We have a waived rule item, consider lifting the mask requirement in county buildings and to make wearing masks a personal choice for employees and the public effective immediately.
In objection, waived rule.
Object.
Moving to the next agenda, I mean, yeah, next agenda. Attorney, you have anything?
No, thank you.
Deputy Minister, you have anything?
No, sir.
Yeah, in case you missed it, Saturday night Sheriff Cunningham had his spook tackler and the cars cut off the line at 5:30. And if you're familiar with the Chisholm area, like I am growing up there, the line went from Fairground Road all the way to the old Wind Dixie. So all the way down Fairground, all the way down Vandiver, and on to Lower Tumka Road. And they had to cut it off at the Wind Dixie at 5:30. It took them to 8:15 to go through the line. That's how many cars were in line at 5:30. And it started at four, and I was there before they started, and the line was as long as you could see it. So just a huge success and congratulate Sheriff Cunningham. I don't think he's in here now, but really good media event.
Just good to see Pastor Ken Austin. Appreciate your prayer and wishing you well and all of you. Thank you.
Commissioner Walker?
I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman.
Florence and Sheriff Kendall, we voted for the bond issue. Weren't you also to recommend who were you?
We can certainly make a recommendation.
I mean, when were we going to do that? I thought we talked about...
We can, is this the time to discuss it?
I thought we were probably going to be on the agenda.
I think that's the next step. I know a couple meetings ago, I think...
What's your... Yeah, but he came at the wrong time.
But I think they already have the accounts.
Did anybody got a problem with that?
Yes.
I don't know that they're talking.
Somebody said yes.
I don't know, yeah. I don't know if you speak on that.
What's the question, Mr. Chairman?
My only question is when, when, when would the finance director get, get to choose the people to handle bonds and...
I said, no, I said they recommend, recommend.
When did that happen?
Well, they're, they're, they're the experts. They're the ones that work with the folks each and every day. They don't want to put the time in. They don't want to give us the information. They don't want to be spending the time with the folks. They spent time with a couple of us. What's the finance director in there, who's there, they don't want to do the legwork.
So you asked them for a recommendation? Because I didn't. You did.
How many people, Cheryl and Mr. Kendall, entities are capable of doing the job? And have you, have you looked at? Once you answer that question, my next question, have you all looked at each entity that has the capability to do the job?
I'm not sure how many entities, but we've, we've dealt in the past with three different groups.
And has anyone spoken with anybody other than Stiefel about?
Yes, they have.
Well, I'm just asking a question, Mr. Chairman. Thought you would give him a chance to say something on the issue.
Well, you can say something on the issue.
Okay.
But we need to keep, stop the crafting, because we know what to do, Bill.
Well, what...
I mean, I can ask them for their opinion, and you can ask them for their opinion. I mean, let's stop fooling around or acting like we don't know nothing, don't know what's happening.
Well, I'm just trying to...
Out of that now.
Well, if you, I'm, well, okay. Said I was going to be on my best behavior.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's all right. I just, yeah, I just wanted to know, you know, are there any other entities that's capable of handling it that we've had an opportunity to talk to? Because certainly we want to give everybody who's capable an opportunity to present and not just show favoritism and choose one single entity all the time. Has anyone else had an opportunity, one of those three entities, to present? Nope.
Fraser Lanier came and talked to us a couple, two or three weeks ago in general about future opportunities, more specifically about some refunding opportunities they had presented back earlier.
Are they not interested in this particular, however, I mean, I'm still not clear on what we're trying to borrow, how much, but are they not interested in this opportunity?
With this particular opportunity, having worked with Stiefel earlier in this calendar year, the financial information is, is together, it's the same financial information that will be considered in the rating calls. And it, quite frankly, will streamline the process. And their work has always been excellent.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the opportunity.
Yeah, Stiefel's done all the preliminary work on this, and I spoke with John Maseek when he came that day, and I explained that to him that I wouldn't be comfortable pulling it from Fraser Lanier after all the work it's, for them, their work's been done. I have no issue with Fraser Lanier or Neil, First Touch Keggy Bank, or anybody else we've used in the past. They've all, in my opinion, has done a good job. And, and I have no issue with spreading the love around to the Montgomery companies. But in this case, I think Mike Dunn has, has done most of the work for this one. He came to us with some options. And one thing I have, I will say about Mike, and I'm not going to say it, the other ones haven't done this, but Mike won't come to, every time he comes to, he's not trying to get you to borrow money. He, he helps make good decisions and provides information. And he's been very consistent with that, which is one thing I like about them. But then again, I'm good friends with John Maseek too, and I like Fraser Lanier, so... But in this case, I would, I would be on the side of, since Stiefel's already been involved in this one, that's, it'll speed up the process, like you said. But I have no issue, and told John I had no issue with the information he provided in that meeting. And maybe going forward next time with them, I have no issue with that either, so...
Mr. Chairman.
You know, we, excuse me, you know, we gave them the DHR bill. But DHR has been snoring around. I think that was about 25, that's Fraser's, the real dollar.
Yeah.
We chose, we've been dealing with the both of them. So we didn't leave nearly about an hour.
Can I ask one more question? Did we say we had three different entities that we were familiar with? I was just wondering what the third one was that I'd misunderstand.
It was a...
There's been a firm out of Atlanta that's come. I think they met with Chairman Dean one time. But they were out of Atlanta. They had a local presence, but the ownership was out of Atlanta.
All right, thank you.
So we have that. There's a lot of want to recommend somebody else, I'm sure. Want to put that on the table before we leave here today.
Mr. Chairman, finally, with, with, who we, who we got, they've done the work, upped this force, already worked up. I don't have a problem with it.
You making the motion?
Making the motion.
Yeah, you moving.
To add, you're, you're asking for us to add...
I'm not, I'm not making the motion because I don't think we should be doing this.
Yeah, let's hold off.
But since you've decided that you want to do it.
Well, he doesn't think we need to be doing the courthouse. But that vote is on the agenda for next week, and Mr. Chairman...
No, no, we already voted on that.
I mean, for next meeting.
What? We voted on that today.
We voted to move forward. We did not vote on who was going to do it.
On who was going to do it, I'm sorry.
Could that be on the next agenda? Do we have to sit here after the meeting and do that?
All right, so the, the motion needs to be made with regard to who we want to utilize to do the bond work. That would, and based on the conversation we've had, Mr. Chairman, I recommend that we have Stiefel to work on that project for us. We also need bond counsel. If we have a recommendation for that, I believe Gilpin, Gilpin-Govan typically does that. I would make that proposal as well.
Clint Graves.
Clint Graves. So I would recommend that we engage Stiefel and Gilpin-Govan for this bond work. So that's my motion that we move forward.
Second.
Okay, all the people that have been knowing by raising your right hand? Opposed?
I abstained.
I'm abstaining as well. I'm abstaining as well.
Three, three, two, move for that. Okay, that's all I have, man.
I don't have, I don't, I don't have anything.
Y'all think you made the waived rule so bad?
You need to tell us that, Mr. Attorney. You need to let us know the answer to that because we don't know. Or, you know, my motion was to put it on, or we can put it on the next agenda. It doesn't have, it doesn't have to be done today. You, you tell us, Mr. Attorney, the best way for us to handle it. All right, let's do that.
Okay. Next agenda. All right. Nobody else have any comments?
Mr. Chairman, I move with you.
Okay.
Second.